Time is 6:30 PM. We'll call a regular Charles City Board of Education meeting to order and have roll call, please.
Guy.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
Crispy.
Present.
May Cumber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
All members present and accounted for. Agenda item one is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions?
Yeah, there's one addition. Under eleven B appointments, two additional names to be added. Heather Wilson, middle school counselor, and Brad Beal, 10th grade baseball coach.
Okay. I'll make the motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Wintering.
Yes.
Guy.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Crispy.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item two is to welcome the visitors and allow public comment. As we begin our agenda this evening, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we, as a board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa sunshine law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three, comments by board members and superintendent, and we'll start off with Dr. Cox.
Well, the raindrops didn't stop. Our moving crew from getting classrooms of Washington and Lincoln realigned for the Great Elect configuration this fall. Many hands made for light work. Huge thank you to all the teachers, the support staff, and the volunteers that turned out to help. We were done in record time before lunch, which was really unanticipated. Thought it would go a lot longer. I want to give big congratulations to Coach Tyler Downing and the baseball team for knocking off number one ranked Clear Lake last night. You'll probably talk about that, Scott. Comments are in action again tomorrow night against Cedar Falls. Waiver requests have been submitted for the Bus Barn and the Storm Sewer Projects Planning and Zoning meets on Wednesday to review those requests. And we've had a couple of successful graduations over the past two weekends, Cary Lane and Charles City High School. And now school's out for the summer. The central office summer hours are 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM Mondays through Thursdays and 7:30 to 11:30 on Fridays.
Thank you. Thinking back at our last meeting when Dr. Cox had mentioned that we had been in board meetings or meetings for 71 hours in the last year or so.
Yep.
I kind of kept track of my time in the last nine to 10 days as well. Didn't attend any meetings, but I attended a number of end of the year functions. Music awards banquet, sports banquet, class day, baccalaureate, and graduation. Now, when we had graduation at Cary Lane, just in the last 10 days or so, I think I've put in over 15 hours at attending school functions and events that if I was not on the board, I probably would not have attended. So, we do put in a lot of extra time away from the board table. Also, wanted to mention that anyone who has followed me on Twitter knows that I support and follow the boys' cross-country and track teams, even to the point that this year I ended up going to two of their track meets this fall, or this spring, out of town. And not quite as hooked on track yet as I am on baseball, but it's getting there. And I ended up buying one of their State Track t-shirts and wearing it proudly this evening in recognition of all of the young men and women who went to State Track meet down at Drake. 16 or 17 guys in 11 events, so that's exceptionally well, in my opinion. And yes, I attended the baseball game in Clear Lake last night. For those of you who also follow me on Twitter or Facebook, saw that I was tweeting out scores about every inning, sometimes less, especially when we scored an hour and a half of the inning. And looking forward to a great baseball season this year. Those are my comments. Would just also like to share as a reminder that when we make comments, it would not be appropriate for us to get into a conversation with each other about comments made at the meeting if an item were to come up during these types of comments. So, anyone else with comments?
Well, I just wanted to say, yes, Scott, can you hear that? Okay. You'll get the MVP award for last week's attendance in one of the functions. You were busy. I think you were as busy as Dr. Cox with all of the things you were doing, so thank you for doing that. And as well, Dr. Cox, you've mentioned all of our hours that we commit at the last board meeting. And I also wanted to acknowledge on behalf of all of our spouses and families that I'd like to thank them too because they put in the hours with us. When you go to dinner at the pub and somebody drops in and talks halfway through dinner about school board or phone calls and so forth. So, many thanks to all of our families too for hanging in there with us. One last comment. We do have a food service committee meeting this Thursday at 2 o'clock? 2 o'clock. So, we'll see what we can do there to, you know, try and raise the standards to what our vision is.
Thank you.
On Sunday, we enjoyed the fruits, so to say, of our labor, all of us. I felt very humble, excited. There were so many emotions sitting up there on stage and looking out at that awesome crowd of graduates we had this year. And then to have the honor to pass out diplomas to them is very humbling. So, thank you to all the past board members, to the past superintendents, to all the teachers, to everyone that was involved, to parents, just Charles City community as a whole. Thank you. You raised a fine group of graduates this year.
I got just one comment. Last Friday night, I represented the board and passed out the letters to the new letterman at the trap shooting event down at Nashville. And we passed out, I think, 12 new letters and 12 participants got Chevrons that had lettered last year. There was a couple of new ones that had lettered after letter time last year before the state event was over, because they got to have, one of the qualifications, they got to shoot four 22 scores, you know, season in order to be qualified for a letter. And a couple of them did that at the state competition. So, that was a very interesting event and I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, Jim.
I echo everything everybody said here. One other quick piece that I got a text just a few moments ago that we had Jamie Sinlinger qualified for state at the girls' regionals event today and congratulate her. I think that makes a run of six consecutive years now of having an individual or team qualify for state competition in the girls' golf, which is a pretty awesome achievement. The final thing I had was I came across a Greek proverb last week that I thought was very interesting. And it reads that civilization flourishes when people plant trees under which they will never sit. And I felt that you could very seamlessly replace plant trees with built schools. So, kind of an interesting one.
Excellent. Very good.
Very good proverb coming from a DNI forester.
Exactly.
If there's no other comments, we'll move on to agenda item four, which is the public hearing for middle school addition plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. So, this would be the time and place for that public hearing. Would ask if the board secretary, if we have received any written comments at this point.
Yes, there was one written comment from Doug Lindman, and I gave each of you a copy of that, so you have it when you deliberate.
Thank you. So, are there any oral comments to be made at this point in time during the public hearing for this addition? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to agenda item five, which is the public hearing deliberation. This would be the point in time when the board members would discuss the adoption of the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total costs for Package One, the early bid package of the middle school addition. Any comments by board members? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item six, which is the resolution adopting plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost of the middle school addition project. This is an action item. We have our Estes and BLDD here. If anyone has any questions, otherwise...
Motion to approve the resolution adopting plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost of the middle school addition project.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item six as presented. Any further discussion? Any comments by the public? Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Walker.
Yes.
Crispy.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Wintering.
Yes.
Guy.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item seven, middle school construction update. Again, this is an action item, and we have Jean Underwood and the team from BLDD Architects, as well as Estes Construction here for presentation.
Hello. So, tonight we have, BLDD is going to talk first about interiors, environmental graphics, and we have a short 3D walkthrough video for you to watch to kind of explain the interior design concept, to give you a little better visual of what we're looking at. So, I think what we'll do is watch the video first, and then Danielle will show you some of the updated colors and finishes, and then we'll start to talk about environmental graphics, which is a new topic item for us to have today. So, what we brought for the environmental graphics are what we call mood or inspiration boards. And so, this is something that we do internally as kind of a starting point and to get your feedback, your input, and then we'll go the next step and start to develop actual concepts. So, in the video, you'll see the locations where we're proposing that you place the environmental graphics. So, we'll run through it once. Danielle will talk, and then we'll go through the video again, stopping and starting, and kind of pointing out those locations to you. So, I'm going to attempt to get this to work, and we'll start. All right. So, the video is about two and a half minutes long. So, the walkthrough takes you basically on the fitness trail path through the school. You can see that we'll be stopping here in just a second to look into the learning studios to get a little better visual on that. This is what we would call kind of a quick video. There's a lot of things that haven't been finessed and updated, and some of the details are missing. You saw, like, when you looked outside, you could see a lot of trees, which there's probably not going to be trees there because we're going to be putting Phase Two in that location, but it gives you an idea of what the spaces will feel like.
Is that Mr. Wolf?
So, this is the cafe area outside of the learning studio. So, now we're going upstairs to the second floor learning studios. We're not going to peek inside those. They're the same as on the first floor. So, this is the Phase Two serving area that we'll build out for Phase Two. So, in the first phase, it's more of a lounge kind of gathering area. And then heading back into the main commons area, we'll take a look down here. You can see where the information commons will be located. Kind of a quick peek, and then we'll head back down the stairs. So, you can see that a lot of the furniture isn't being shown in this. Kind of give you a better idea of just, we don't want to muddy it up too much so that we can show you the things that we're trying to show you. And then we'll come back in and put in the environmental graphics and finish some of that detail stuff that's missing, you know, and finalize it for your use for publication and fundraising and those kinds of things. So, I'm going to let Danielle talk a little bit about updates to the interior finishes, and then we'll move into environmental graphics.
One question for you.
Yes.
The video goes really fast.
Yes.
And I haven't found a way to slow it down.
Um, I think...
Is there a way to do that?
We can probably set the speed in the program that we use to do the walkthrough. We can probably adjust the speed so it goes a little bit slower.
Okay.
Yeah. But pretty much we'll just hit pause and stop it along the way, but I don't know that we can slow it down.
For our internal use or in presentations, it zooms at times, and I just wondered if there's an ability to slow it down so that people can kind of see it?
I think, you know, I think if we said we want it to be closer to four or five minutes long, we can look at the software that makes the video and say, we want this to move a little bit slower, take this much time to get between these two points, pause here, those kinds of things. We can tweak that.
So, there's not a spot that I missed that controls the speed and just...
No, it's just a standard MP4 format video, so any standard player will play it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, good to see you all again. Terry was kind enough to bring the previous finish board, so that's over here for your reference. But I did bring some loose samples of replacements, and I thought that'd be nice to be able to compare and contrast and see how things line up with the revisions. But last time it was mentioned that you guys wanted something a little more saturated, a little more vibrant, and you were concerned about the darkness of that blue carpet. So, today I brought a new blue carpet, which is definitely more vibrant, and honestly, I think it goes with the green carpet a little bit better.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay.
Good.
Absolutely.
I'll slide around in a second.
And it looks great even laying down like that. It's nice to look at carpets at that, obviously, because that's where they'll be laying, and definitely is much brighter than...
Good.
Good blue.
I've also brought along some paint swatches, and I think we can kind of go through the video a little bit to talk about where those will be. So, that bright blue kind of perimeter stripe, we're thinking we'll incorporate some environmental graphics and really that community that you guys have talked about, and I'll touch on more on that a little bit. But that's kind of this bright blue color. And then within that, you know, maybe if there's any background images or tonal effects, just to give it some depth, we'd be looking at, you know, some lighter hues of that same color. From there, we can look at the servery because it's right there, thinking about orange for that space. And this would be kind of, again, the background color, a nice saturated orange with then tonal variations as needed to break it up. Here you can see the orange again as part of a fitness station. And then to highlight any recesses we have for trash receptacles or water fountains, I was showing a black wall and a black floor to kind of identify that, you know, this is kind of a key point. And with it being black, it will hide any dirt or anything that happens with a garbage overflow that may occur. And then as we go into the studios, we can kind of talk about, or begin to talk about branding opportunities for each classroom. So, right now, we're showing Listen and Media as having a nice rich purple tone, and having them the same color kind of makes it symmetrical and draws your focus to that presentation stage portion of the gather space, so that can kind of become the feature. And then we can forward to look at the other wall. Here we're showing, in this classroom, Explorers on your left is green, and that seemed like a natural choice for science and biology and exploration. Cave is, again, the same blue that's in the commons. And then Flex is purple to, again, provide that symmetry and kind of a triangulation with the purple theme within the room. Camp is orange to imply a campfire, and it's going to be a more active group room than the cave. The cave will be kind of a quiet group room, whereas Camp might have more lively discussion and video presentation and that kind of thing. And then on the end, you have Design, which we're showing as a bright teal color, which fits in with the whole secondary kind of color scheme that we've been looking at a little long. So, I have those samples, and I'm just going to pass these out because I don't know how well you guys can see them from where you're sitting. There's the carpet. And then keeping in mind, the more saturated one is the main field color for all of them, with just tonal variations if we need to break up background color and keep it interesting. I've also brought the more gray tones for your neutral wall colors and door frames and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
So, do you have any questions about the colors that we're looking at?
The concern I have with the walking trail is all black.
Yes, and we are showing black so that it stands out and it reminds you of a track and is very obvious this is the path that you take to stay out of people's ways. But if you want to look at a different color, that's definitely something we can explore.
But that will be part of the tile. It won't be...
Yeah, it's all linoleum tile, so it's all the same flooring product. It's just a matter of what color it is.
And it will have a nice, it will have the rosiness coating on it, so it's all nice and shiny. It's not like carpet that collects...
Right, right.
The color that you, the yellow, then you have it going down onto the floor, so you're able to do that with the tile then match the color.
Well, that's actually, that's the orange color, and so it's not going to be, in the video, it looks like a perfect match, but the linoleum has a little bit of a marbleization to it. So, it's going to look like it's cohesive, but it's not going to be a perfect match the way the paint color works. So, this is, these are the floor colors.
I see.
And then the paint colors coordinate with them.
Can I see? Are these, are these new?
Yes, yeah, they're new colors.
What's the trail of?
Right, so this is the walking, this is the walking trail. It looks the orange.
Yeah.
The black will be easier to keep. You know, I mean, it'll get traffic.
Yeah, think about like scuffs or any shoe marks that may occur on this jogging. Yeah, black would hide that well. And I know Robin had mentioned liking the green carpet and wanting to see more of it, so we're showing some of that potentially in that second floor potential or future cafe space.
Oh, yeah.
Stop!
That's beautiful.
Apologize.
And the purple is just used in the one classroom area?
It's just in the gather space to identify the learning studios.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so...
No concerns about that teal color?
No.
Because I...
No.
Jason, no concern about the teal color? Jim, Scott?
Is it too dark? Is it not vibrant enough?
Would we take it up even another level of saturation?
We absolutely can.
Could it be turquoise?
Yeah.
Could I forward you a group of colors?
I think in five years, you're going to say, what were we thinking?
Do you think so? If we go with a vibrant color even more so?
This one right here.
I, not with that tile. Look at it as a combination, in combination.
And then all this blue. I love royal blue, but when you walk in, you're going to be confused. Are we in Rockford or Charles City? And so, I just want to throw that out there before we paint everything blue. I'm curious about that versus the nice orange statement.
Yeah, and I think this is somewhat misleading because you're not seeing any of the furniture there, so it looks like this vast sea of blue when in reality you're just going to see snippets of blue between tables and chairs and everything like that. I think there's ways that we can incorporate some of the orange into the environmental graphics portion that really ties in your identity. But I want to be careful with orange being such a bright color, and blue just seems a little more timeless, and color psychology wise, it's a more comforting, calming color. And so, with orange being much more active, I don't know that you necessarily want your info comments to be super active. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from in this presentation, but we can add more orange if that's something you really want.
Jean, will you take us back to where we're first coming into the comments so that we can see more what Dr. Cox is indicating? Because you're referring a lot to that stripe.
Yeah, it's just everywhere. And in the, I think back to last September with the scenery that we had on the canvas where you can pretend that you're actually in the new commons, and it's nice shades of orange with some infographics, and it just looks like a real comet environment.
What about more grays in that area? Would you, would you go with graduated shades from lighter to medium to darker? Because we've got this great vast space.
Yeah, and there's actually three, I think it's two or three shades of gray on the wall right now. So, keeping in mind this is a 34-foot-high space, that blue stripe is constituting about eight or nine feet of that. So, there is a lot of gray. Don't get me fooled. But I think another nice thing about the blue is that it's the complementary color of orange. So, once we start to get comments, logos, and stuff on that, they're really going to pop and be really vibrant. But we could, I mean, if you want that... But we could, I mean, if you want that to be slight gray or something really dark and have your comments just be orange on top of it, that's something you could play with.
I think that would almost be, I, I know that that's going to give you the same calming effect, and it'll also give you the same neutral. I understand trying to bring in some color, but I also understand what Dr. Cox is saying. Having walked into other schools' commons, you just assume, and rightfully so, that you're walking into comet country. I don't want it to scream orange, no, but if we give it not a primary color, so that we're not claiming identifying another school district that has blue?
Especially a close one.
Okay.
Or Central Springs, I mean, everybody to our immediate west is blue.
It's an invitation.
Because I, at some point, could see really large, I envisioned huge canvases at some point, even on some of these, that could be very full of, like you said, comet things. And that, just a simple gray background, because those will become the, what?
Yeah, okay, that's something.
It's going to look very boring when you switch it to that.
Yeah.
But I think then keep the blue in that upstairs hallway and into that media center, of course, up there. Can we go back to see where the purple is too, in that gathering space? I know there's that big stripe, but where else is there purple? Is that wall, shades of purple?
No, it's really just kind of at the softits as you enter three of the classrooms. And then, uh, I'm thinking Flex will have maybe the lighter purple tone on one wall as an accent wall. Studies have shown kids respond to having two to three wall colors in a room. But the vibrant, bright purple, right now, we're only showing is like a three-foot-high stripe above classroom entries.
Okay. I'm just wondering if that purple can be tweaked.
Sure.
Is it too bold?
I'm, I think it's too pink.
Too pink.
I'm just feeling like those softer shades are pink.
Okay. You can blue it up.
There's a whole lot of colors.
But, um, we appreciate your work, you know, you working with us on these shades, it's, it's a difficult thing.
I do like the blocks of color. The blocks of color in this space is just dead on. I like the way you did take it in the hallway, down the wall, onto the floor, that is an awesome way to, to break up what is, can be a long stretch of nothing, without having to add a lot of hangings to the walls or things hanging everywhere. I love the hanging softits.
Yes.
And please keep me posted so we make sure we get clouds on them, because I can make sure that there's clouds on them. So I love that look.
The portable lockers weren't shown.
Right.
We didn't really go into the.
Yeah.
Will that come like in a?
There's a lot of things missing from the video, such as furniture, the lockers, things like that.
Back in the room where we had the gray walls and the blue stripe all the way around it, I just kind of visualized, maybe, I don't know what you call them, but I, I call them a banner that would hang from the top and you could almost bring it down low enough that you could raise and lower them like a flagpole, so you didn't have to get a big tall ladder to get up there, but yet have them long enough so that the, the flagpole rope would be still being behind them when they're up there, so you don't see it, you know? But then you could change them too if you wanted to. I could see that against the, maybe coming down onto the blue, maybe from the gray hill or fast into them rafters.
I love these views.
When you see that, the outside.
The balcony.
Yeah, the balcony.
The balcony area.
Definitely needs to be slowed down on a few of those things, Jean.
So right there, is that a blue on top, that beam? Go back to the media center. Right there, that's blue.
Oh, yeah, so that is, within that soffit, there's some structure that's supporting the sliding gate, so that you can lock off the info comments when you have events. So the soffit needs to be there structurally. But to kind of break it up, since that is a really tall space and you have the wood ceiling above, I was thinking a colored soffit might be a fun thing to introduce. So what are the things you're not seeing? I'm going to come over to the microphone. The portions of the roof that are popped up that are higher, that's a wood deck, so that, that ceiling is wood on the inside, so that doesn't show up on the walkthrough. Um, the other thing that you can't see, or that you don't see is it's all the window frames and mullions are like a kind of a dark brown color, and so that really makes them stand out a little bit more against. So there's a lot of little things that just haven't been tweaked yet, this is like a two-day version of the walkthrough video, and we'll keep developing it as we go. Adding the furniture that's missing, adding the lockers, you know, adding all those little things, getting the environmental graphics included in it. So, keep that in mind, that there's, there's some levels of richness that are missing right now.
Maybe a little walk out into the treehouse or.
Sure.
Out onto the.
A view from there would be great.
Out onto the balcony, right, we can add, we add those kinds of things, absolutely, yeah.
I just went through a meeting this noon, the Kewanas, when the Charles City Police Department, I think they've showed it to the school, the teachers and the staff and everything else. And they were talking about, for safety reasons now, that the first two officers that arrive on the scene can immediately enter the building, they used to have to wait for a SWAT team or wait for something, and in the next four and a half minutes is when all the action happens. Is there going to be a way that when these guys get here and they hear where the, hopefully it never happens, where the gunshots or the actions coming from, that they can lock this thing down into a smaller area, they can push buttons someplace and shut some doors?
Yeah, that's.
Just to confine them so they can't get around the rest of the building, run ahead of them, or whatever, just keep them locked.
Right, we're working, we have a meeting scheduled, I think it's on the first, maybe, with, uh, to talk about technology telecom and security. And exactly which doors do we need to shut when, where do we want card access, you know, those kinds of questions. So yes, we'll identify, you know, can we close off the learning studios at those two entrances, lock those down? Can we lock off the doors between the north wing of the high school and the middle school learning studios, so that anybody that's in that area is contained in that area? Whether it's to keep somebody out or to let somebody in, but lockdown, right. So the idea would be to be able to be in the office, hit a panic button, and go through a sequence of lockdown events, yes.
I think that needs to be done.
And then we'll also talk about where do we need security cameras, where do you want to have card access, who has access to those things? Do you want a key fob, do you want, um, push buttons? There'll be a Knox box, what do we call a Knox box on the outside, so the fire department can always get in. You know, there'll be a, a box on the outside of the building, so the fire department can always get into the building. Um, or if you want the police to be able to as well, you know, you make those arrangements with them, but yes.
Because I know they were talking today, that some of the big events that have happened all over the United States, I think there's been two hundred and some schools in the last, I don't know how many years. Anyway, they, uh, they said the biggest thing is for them to get in there immediately and go to this, and not to worry about the people that are laying on the floor, but get to where the action is to get it stopped, so there's no more laying on the floor.
Right, right.
And they need to shut it down.
Any other questions about colors, finishes?
Less, less dark blue would be great.
Okay.
Last week, someone brought up that terrazzo flooring would be a better option for this project than what we're going with. And it came to mind for me this week, or, excuse me, last week in particular, because I visited, um, a facility that I'd done some work for in two thousand and four, that had actually used the same flooring as what we're going to do, a tile with a rosinus finish over the top.
Okay.
And, um, that would be eleven years ago, and it still looks perfect.
Sure, so.
There's still a shine on it, like the day they did it. And I asked then, um, the maintenance people, and they said, no, they haven't buffed it, they haven't waxed it, they haven't done anything to it, they have just damp mopped it and dry mopped it, and that's all they've done.
Right, so there's definitely pros and cons to the terrazzo floor versus a linoleum tile or linoleum sheet product. The first thing that you think of when you think of a terrazzo floor is that it's going to last a hundred years, you know, we see them in institutional buildings all the time. But along with that hundred-year lifespan comes a hefty price tag up front. It's not uncommon to see terrazzo in the twenty-five dollars a square foot installation range, you know, that's, that's the cost. Whereas the linoleum tile that we're looking at is about three fifty a square foot, it's going to last you twenty years, multiply that times five, you're still looking at a lower install cost. There's some maintenance involved with terrazzo, not a lot, you'd have to seal it every couple of years with the linoleum product that we're specifying. Damp mop it, and if you want to buff it, you can, but that's it, there's no waxes, there's no regular maintenance. The nice thing about, um, the linoleum tile product is that you can change it when you get tired of the colors, if you decide teal is really not happening.
Or match it, when you have to bring in another flooring to bump up against it.
Correct. So you have more options when it comes to replacing one damaged section, it's very easy to replace a damaged tile, it's much harder, um, to patch terrazzo, although it can be done. Terrazzo is also a very rigid material, if you have any movement within your building, especially on a second floor, um, you will get cracks. And that's, that's just the nature of the material. So, there's pros and cons, what else, we, we talked about this in the car on the way over. I think you touched on all of them, I think, uh, linoleum is a very, linoleum is a very green product. Uh, the one we're looking at is, what was it, ninety-seven percent, all-natural product. So, uh, I think seventy percent of that is rapidly renewable, uh, it has fewer off-gassing because it has less harsh chemicals in it. So from a green standpoint, it's very good in that regard, but I think you touched on original. I think the only other thing might be that linoleum tile has a little better sound absorptive quality, and it's softer underfoot. So, I mean, those are the pros and cons, but really, usually the largest contributing factor is the upfront cost. You know, we'll put them in university buildings, something that's going to have a life, a long lifespan, but also has a little bit higher budget, you know, than you would see. We've, we've put them in high schools before, but it depends on the bidding climate and what the economy looks like and how much money people have. Honestly, we'd have to cut a lot of square foot out of the building in order to be able to afford terrazzo in this project. But really, I think we selected the linoleum tile as a product that we thought was a good fit for this project and for the users, and to provide the color variations, and all those different green benefits, and all of that stuff is a whole package.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's, let's move on to environmental graphics. I'll pull up the video. So we have hard copies for you again to pass around. And I'd like to reiterate what Jean said earlier, that these are concepts, these are mood boards, these are starting points, this is not finished graphic. It's just kind of the direction we may want to head, and we want to get your input and your buy-in, because this is your building and this is your identity, your branding. So, this is just a starting point. So this is kind of what we're looking at for the common space. I know that it had been mentioned that you really wanted to incorporate all the towns that go to the school district. And so, kind of incorporating some basic data, maybe some stylized maps, might be cool to showcase coordinates. I think we've got some phonetic pronunciation spellings up there. I actually called the Iowa State Library and got town establishment dates, and so maybe that's something we could incorporate. And so this is still showing the blue, but we can do the same thing with the gray that you guys are looking for. And on the top-left corner, maybe some opportunities for stylizations and types of graphics. I think, uh, the larger image is really showcasing kind of what we're thinking of, of this large strip of color with lots of text, you know, maybe it's your town motto, maybe it's the state motto, maybe there are quotes that you think, uh, the students would really relate to. And then on the second page of this is incorporating, you know, your pedestrian bridge, the streetlights representing your vibrant main street, graphics for the river and kayaking. Also pulling in some of your town history, that the Hart Par Company made the first washing machine and tractor, and that started here. Uh, also, in some of my research, I found that there used to be a Native American tribe, I believe it was the Winnebagoes, that were here before settlers came, and maybe incorporating that in some way. Additionally, we're showing maybe some inspiring text or words that you think describe what a Charles City student may aspire to be. And then I went through some notable people from Charles City, and maybe we could incorporate quotes from those kinds of people, or, uh, you guys have a Hall of Fame astronaut from Charles City. So, pulling on your rich history as a starting point, but then bringing in who you are now and who you're going to be in the future. And so this is just very much a loose starting point, and we want your feedback and your input to develop this further.
Which walls of the?
Oh, um, so, this would be on the south and east wall of the commons. The north wall has the openings to the info commons, so that's not really ideal for putting graphics on. And then the west wall has a lot of exposed structure that would probably interrupt any kind of imaging. So it seemed that the gym, the gym wall would be your main wall, and then that could kind of continue on to that exterior east wall.
So you're looking for comments on the two boards you've shown us so far? Or do you want to wait until you're complete?
Well, we can do it, we can do it either way, we can get all the way through all six boards and kind of are just the way we've approached the entire project, uh, which I think would probably be the better way to go, and then.
Okay.
Take comments on specific areas and just your thoughts in general. And I know, um, I had requested Justin to help provide maybe some images of the different communities that we could incorporate into the graphics and those kinds of things as well. So hopefully, we can kind of pull it all together, but giving us some direction, saying, yes, you're going in the right direction, or let's do some course correction, that's the kind of information we'd like to get from you tonight. As far as schedule for environmental graphics, I'll just hit on this before we keep going. Um, we need to include the environmental graphic materials, so it's, usually it's a film that's applied to the walls. So we will need to include all the locations that we want environmental graphics, and then we'll provide the, um, the vector graphics or the images to the company that's actually doing the printing. So we don't necessarily have to know everything and make all those decisions now, but we do need to know exactly how much square footage of this we're talking about within the building and the locations that it's going. You know, so for example, in the commons, we've got that stripe that kind of goes around, that's where we were thinking, you know, and if that's not where you want things, that's fine. But in our bid documents that go out on the twenty-second of June, we need to have that nailed down, that we want information, or environmental graphics, you know, five hundred square feet in the commons, it's this, this high and this long. At the fitness stations, we all have ten stations, it's this wide and this high. We can work through the specifics with you over the next couple of months, but we need, we do need to nail it down. Especially if you're wanting to use, um, a video or walkthrough as a promotional item, um, to be able to include those in it. We'd like to get all that stuff going as well, so that's just a, an aside. So this is moving on to the cafe, or the, I'm sorry, the survey on your left and the cafe on your right. So, uh, we took a stab at maybe applying some names, because each, uh, survey has two serving lines, and maybe we could call them something that's comet-related or celestial in some way. And then finding a kind of an icon or symbol that relates to that name, so it's really identifiable for kids to say, you know, where are you grabbing lunch today, I'm going to Stargazer. Or, you know, kind of communicate that and have that wayfinding element. And so we're showing different potential icons for the different potential names that we've shown. And then maybe having a background of fruits and vegetables, along with more space elements, and kind of having a mixture of food and science and space and comets, and really kind of subtly bringing in your, um, identity through that. And then also we've shown a little menu sign here, and I think that's probably the best way to incorporate your menu, since your cafes and surveys are very open, and with that closing gate, these freestanding signs have an eleven by seventeen insert, so you could change it out every day, you could change it out once a week. Uh, and then they can just be kind of put wherever makes sense for your serving lines. And so moving into the gather space, um, thinking design could have an icon of either a blank canvas or a blank piece of paper or something, you know, that's starting point whenever you design something and you start to put your ideas to paper. whenever you design something and you start to put your ideas to paper. And then also, since it will be functioning sometimes as an art room, kind of having some more art supply type images to go with that. And then explore, we like the idea of playing with both the science aspect as well as the actual explorer aspect. So maybe there's actually signs or a compass or something mixed in with that. And then make is very much a construction builder kind of area. That's where actually proposing to rename flex to be more of a verb and more of an inviting, exciting room. And then camp, having things that represent teamwork, communication and thought bubbles and those sort of elements, but also paying a little bit of homage to an actual campfire. And then media, because all of the other rooms are verbs. Thinking about a verb that we could apply to the media room and create seemed to make a lot of sense for that because you're creating videos, you're creating graphic design, you're creating films and music and that sort of thing. But also wanting to introduce a lot of high-tech iconography with this room because it will be kind of your tech-heavy space. And then moving on to listen, having the earbuds or the texting bubbles or something that kids will identify with as listening or waiting for a response or engaging with. And then to the right, we have the cave and playing off the idea of rocks and stalactites, maybe even caveman paintings, but also having books and newspapers and kind of a quiet reading environment. And then at the bottom, we're just showing some other symbols that we thought were eye-catching or that could be of use at some point.
How do you plan to use those round, like, icons that we keep seeing?
Oh, they wouldn't necessarily be round. That's just our template.
Okay, I got you.
And you're proposing that these, let's take the cave space for example. Where are you proposing them that we put, obviously over the doorway? You'd have cave.
Yeah.
And then a graphic?
Well, I think that where we showed the bright colors, that would be the graphic. And so, you know, what that composition is, I'm not a graphic designer, but trying to think about what you're trying to communicate within that graphic. And so that's kind of what we're starting with now. So maybe there's one large symbol and some text or some other symbols or...
Right, and the exact graphics that you're seeing here are kind of one line, more cartoonish or bubble-ish kind of imagery. But I want you to focus more on what the actual images are. You know, it's a beaker, it's a thought bubble, it's those kinds of things. We'll hand all of this over to our environmental graphic designer, and she'll come up with a few different options for us. So if you're saying, I don't, I don't like the way this is kind of sketchy. I want something a little more clean-line, high-tech, futuristic. You know, we can go different directions with it. But what we're looking for from you is, yes, we want to have some kind of label for the name. That's great. You know, I like create, I like listen, or I don't. And then we'll have some kind of imagery in wayfinding. It's something that appeals to fifth through eighth graders. Not necessarily something that appeals to us as adults because this is, this is also who this space is for, but...
Are we taking a chance in taking the space and putting a label on it? What happens if, in the use of this, they've decided to, as teachers I know do, decide that this room might work better for this and this room might work better for that? Would take a risk of maybe labeling something that we...
I guess, we're trying to come up with names for the spaces that accommodate all the different activities that we got from our input from staff and students and all those people. So when you say design, that includes a lot of different things, a lot of different activities. You know, if somebody's going to decide that that's going to be a math classroom from now on, then yeah, that doesn't match anymore. And that's not how you're using the space. It's a film, it can be removed. You can put a new film on it, it's not cheap, but it's something that is changeable.
Because I do like the color concept. But I'm not 100% sure on the graphic. And largely because of that reason, that I know since we are a little bit going into what is going to be a new structure, a new way of doing things, that I don't know how sure we can be absolute to put a branding on that space.
Right, it's a leap of faith when you do a new, a new building. And it may be something where we don't want it to say listen or create or design or flex. We just want some kind of imagery or a graphic, and that's okay too. You know, we can look at some of these different icons and images. Maybe we just select one and do a graphic version of that and so that it implies something, but it doesn't define it. And that's okay too.
I know what you're saying, Rob, and you know, this is all so new. And yet, when we think of all of the people that will be in the building, not only the students and teachers, think of substitutes coming in, think of the public coming through. Those images and those words will help define to the rest of the world. You know, we understand what it is because we've been working at this for so long, but everybody else, it would communicate to as well. So I think it's a good start, you know, and we can just take it from there.
Well, my question would be, would a couple of board members have an interest in getting together and looking at this stuff, taking some notes and maybe having a conference call or something to address some of those things? I mean, and I'm certainly not volunteering. My wife will attest that I am definitely out on this part of the project, so.
I'm out as well. But I didn't, you know, if you guys had an interest in that, I don't know.
Well, and if a subcommittee, whether it's representative from the board, staff, administration, Dr. Cox, whoever wants to, that would be absolutely fine. That'd be, then we can come back and forth, you know, every week or every two weeks with updates and options, those kinds of things. And if you feel like maybe just having a color is enough, you know, that's okay too.
Or ask administration and staff to weigh in.
And if you want to have a committee that has a couple of students, a couple of staff, some admin, we can put together a couple of different options, you can vote on it. We can do it however we want.
I think just time to digest it. This is a lot to digest. And to tell you, yeah, go for it, and then to stand there and say, so when did we decide that?
Yeah, and you don't have to take any action on environmental graphics. This is more of an introduction to what it is. And I can send you examples of things that we've done at other schools, of how it's been incorporated and how it's been kind of turned into the branding for that area, you know, that kind of a thing, to help you get a better idea of what's possible.
Some pictures from other districts would be good.
Okay.
I'm really reassured that the sketch image is not what you were proposing because I saw that in...
Unless you love it, and if you love it, then that's what we're proposing.
Yeah, no, I'm really excited that that wasn't the final product.
No, it's, I know the grade level we're working with is word, but it's too, it feels too immature, doesn't it, for, to go with this type of?
Well, and something we can do would be to send you some examples of different styles. And you can say, hate this, love this, put this in a maybe pile and kind of get your feet wet a little bit with it and look at some photos. It's a lot to absorb and a lot to make a decision on, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we need some time to digest it. But I do think that, just like with the food service, cafes, I think that our committee's been able to really help get that right. And I feel comfortable with what we've been able to achieve, you know, with our committee. And if you want anybody to give feedback, I'd be happy to be one of those people. And I bet there's somebody else sitting at this table that would be happy to do the same. But, you know, I think we all have distinct visions and ideas in our head that we just need to share what we are thinking about some of these spaces. And we'll all be on the same page, but I think it's a great start.
Well, let's go over the last, the fitness trail information, Danielle.
This one's kind of the most flushed out, but keep in mind, these symbols don't have to be these symbols. They're just there to relay a message. So we have the colors of the stations alternating. So it's teal-orange, teal-orange to provide some breakup of the space. So that's why you're seeing both colors there. But as far as the composition of the graphic, that's, that black rectangle is scaled to be about the same proportion as what it will be on the wall. And so trying to break down, you know, will there be a title? Does it make sense to have a station number so the general public coming to use the space can say, oh, it's Station 3 this, or I need to go work on my Station 3 stuff? And then going through two different activities. So you have a main activity and an alternate activity. Or maybe the super aggressive people will just go ahead and do both. And then working through what muscle groups you're working and highlighting that anatomically so students are learning at the same time. And then you see kind of those lines representing lines of text about what is this activity? How do you do it? How often do you do it? How many reps? What are the benefits? And then somewhere in there, having a QR code that maybe visually impaired person could go to a website and hear a video or soundtrack about it. And then below that, you see those two smaller rectangles. Those are 11 by 17 inserts for student work. So maybe a student has a project on knees and the station relates to knees. Or maybe it's about health in general, they can display their work. And that's something that the staff really wanted to incorporate in some way, that this could be a learning opportunity in a student presentation area as well. And so pulling some different ideas. I think this entity may want to be a little bit different from what you're doing for the rest of the building's branding because this is a fitness trail. So to me, it's going to be bridging the gap between academics and athletics. And so using maybe your franchise font for your branding system or something like that to kind of make this unique, but still cohesive with both things. And then kind of working through the nine stations, you know, a directory. So first timers can come in, see a map of the trail, understand what it is, how to use it. Maybe Monday, Wednesday, Friday, it's clockwise, and Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday is counterclockwise. And then an agility station, and I can't read my text right there, but I think ladder or dot drills, so lower body agility, foot movement. Flexibility, again, lower body, and doing a series of leg stretches. The third station could be lower body strength. So I think for that one, potentially lunges or wall sits. The fourth station we're showing is balance, which could be yoga pose or two. I'm kind of working on that balance ratio. And then once you get to the second floor, doing upper body things. So lower floor, lower body, upper floor, upper body. Agility, plate tap drill, which we wouldn't do with a plate. We'd probably put a sticker on the floor or the wall. Flexibility, stretches for the core and arms. Strength, push-ups and planks. And then wellness would kind of cap it all off with general health, nutrition information, sleep information. Maybe there's a video monitor, playing a video feed and that kind of thing. Any thoughts on this one?
I like it.
Is it open to the public? Will it be open to the public? Like, you should be, come to the high schools and walk or whatever. Like during events that were going on, could you be doing it?
Yes.
So that's a possibility.
Another thing we talked about is in having it open to the public and the community is maybe we get a local healthcare provider to provide a blood pressure station, you know, that can be incorporated with that. And with the QR codes that we can incorporate, take you to different websites on heart health, a website on stroke, how do you know the signs of a stroke? You know, other things to, you know, provide information to the general public about wellness, not just to students. Things that can, can be incorporated over time as healthcare moves on. You know, do you need, do you need help? You know, what are, these are the resources available in your community. Those kinds of outreach things, you know, can be incorporated either in the directory or the wellness section or the different stations throughout as well. So the intention is that it would be beneficial to the whole community.
I like this design for this.
So how do you want to proceed with the interior design concept and the interior design selections? The environmental design concept, sorry.
It looks like the only thing we might need tweaking on is maybe colors. And we need to better digest the graphics.
Right, for the graphics, I don't need, I don't need an action on the environmental graphics. That was an introduction.
Okay.
And we'll come back with more information for you and look at maybe setting up kind of a subcommittee or a smaller group of people that we can feed things through. As far as the interior, if you're, if you want to go ahead and approve material choices, that's fine. Keeping in mind that we'll tweak some colors, maybe for the blue that's showing up in the commons and a few saturation levels and hues. But in general, you know, generally approve, that's fine with a few modifications.
Anything with fewer dark blues would be great, in my opinion.
I've been telling her the whole time.
But I'll say again, I do like how you're going down the different corridors and the color comes down. There's, there's a saturated wall and the color flows on the floor. I do like the concept of something breaking up the large walls, the commons. Not so much breaking them up, it just adds more drama, more character, more.
What color is that back wall in the stairwell? Is it blue?
Yeah, I think with the commons switching to gray, we would probably look at doing something to incorporate that. So maybe it's a different shade of gray.
Okay.
Yeah, the only reason we're showing that as blue is because otherwise it's stairwell gets very monotonous. And whatever your main color is in your common spaces, that's probably, you know, what we would tie in there.
Okay, I could see that even being quite saturated too, if the other walls are quite light because that too could be a great graphic area for some...
Sure, absolutely.
Positive reinforcing.
And if it's darker, it'll hide fingerprints too. Everybody goes around the stairwells. Okay, all right. Well, how about if I move to approve, let's see, the updated interior design selections pending some further development with color selection? Does that cover the bases?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updated interior design selections pending further color developments. Any discussion?
I saw in this item, there was also mentioned Estes Construction will present an updated budget summary. Are we going to pull that out and discuss that at a later...
Yep, let's finish these first, was my intention. Hearing no other discussion, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
No.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes, motion carried four to one. Do you have anything that you want a motion on for the environmental design concept then? Do we have any volunteers to proceed?
Do you need that tonight, environmental design?
We don't need that tonight.
Okay. I'm wondering if you want to refer this then to administration and staff for further review before they come back with more that they want us to vote on?
Are you meeting with staff tomorrow?
No. What I'd like to do is go back to our offices, pull together some images, some different examples of different styles of environmental graphics, put together a pack of information, send it to Dr. Cox, and he can distribute it to everyone. And then you guys can take a look at it, look at it, look at it. Provide us your feedback, and if you would like to create more of a subcommittee, you can do that at that time. Otherwise...
Potentially at our first meeting in June?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, because that's in two weeks, so.
Yep. Anything else from BLDD then?
Nope, we just printed our 95% construction documents. So we're getting close to the end for the main bid package, so just an update on that. I think Estes has, has their update tonight, but I think that's all that Danielle and I have to present.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Very good.
We would then ask Estes Construction to come forward and give their update on the budget summary.
as we move forward. And rest assured that we will keep in touch with them and continue that outreach and get them committed to being part of the project team as we move forward. So with that, I don't have any videos or anything, that, that, that right there was my
So those bids are due back when, just for reference?
Those bids are 2:00 PM next Wednesday, June 3rd.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And we'll touch on some other key dates here, but
Thank you.
Essentially, what you see up here in the executive summary is, you know, we, we like to do a budget update as the drawings and documents progress. What you're looking at here is a comparison of the previous construction document budget, and I'll point to that in early May, and then where we sit with the documents as they are today and the updated drawings for these early phase bid packages. You can see the delta from the 18.8, in essence, is $35,550. The number to the right represents a variance from our previous budget presentation, but in essence, there's $35,550 that is over the 18.8. Keep in mind that as the project continues to move forward, that number will continue to change, and when we get the actual bids on this early phase, those packages will be locked in, we'll know what those numbers are. The reason I offer some more changes is because we still are carrying over $470,000 in designed bid contingency. So we're very comfortable letting you know that while that number seems to be just north of the 18.8, there are measures within the estimate that will maintain that 18.8 that you've directed us to do. So that is the, the executive summary, the budget update. What you see here, as we have shown before, is just a brief list of some variations that we noticed in the, in the documents this last go around. Some adjustments in the steel, the tonnage, adjustments in some of the site work and some of the site parameters, some credits in the pavement removal, for example, certainly some credits on the, on the design fees. Our number anticipated not what you've got in your, in your packet for approval tonight, so you'll see that adjustment in our executive summary. And then, of course, there's a slight change in the building permit fee, as we call it, an adjustment. We were carrying $35,000 before, and as it turns out, it's $35,285. I'm going to get my exercise here.
Get Paul up here to work the computer.
The alternate bid list items, you'll see the first three, we've noted C1, C2, and C3, and those are the ones that have been identified in this early phase of bidding. The numbering will change slightly to match our, our bid form, but the completion of the sidewalks, as indicated on the site, we've got an add of about $28,500. Again, alternate bid, South Connector gravel road, the private drive, approximately $119,000. First Avenue extension, now that we have more information, we're able to dial in on our quantities, dial in on our unit costs, and we're looking at about $398,000 on that, whereas before we were slightly higher than that, so we're, we're happy to see that number come down. And then the, the ones that are following are ones that we've identified in the past that will go out with the next round of, of bid packages. Okay, so this next page is remaining costs for consideration, and that list has gotten shorter, as you can see, but the one that's up there is one that certainly Jason brought up last time regarding the energy rebate. We're still carrying $75,000. If we see that there is likely to be more, 90 or 100,000, we'll make that adjustment in the estimate moving forward. So conclusions and recommendations, or next, next steps, if you will. Jean and her team are certainly looking at the FFNE, what's in there, and thus why she and her team are looking at existing furniture and equipment and things of that nature. Technology, telecom and security, she mentioned there's a meeting coming up, so we'll know what that consists of and be able to refine that budget number. So next steps, complete the construction documents, issue those notices, remaining bid packages for bid. And in tandem with that, our next steps, you can see bidding period is right now for the early phase documents, due next Wednesday, 2:00 PM. Pre-bid meeting, that was earlier today, very, very good turnout, very good interest and very good questions, all very good questions. Bids due next week. What we do, pre-award interviews within the next couple of days after that, is scope out those apparent low bidders, make sure they meet the criteria, the qualifications. Next board meeting, we'll have a recommendation to Dr. Cox in, in terms of awarding those, those bids. Upon having that happen, we'll issue notice to proceed and actual contract drafting. So this is the next round of activity on Phase Two, or the next round of, of bids, and certainly don't want to belabor you with all of the, the dates there, but we're trying to map out a roadmap for everyone that's interested in seeing what's coming up next to make sure that we've got it, not just on your calendar, but on your agendas as well. And keep in mind that we're, we're willing to, to make adjustments here and work with everyone with the big picture in mind, and that is construction start and occupancy before the start of the next school year. On Phase Two, you'll note that the bids are due, right now we've identified as July 14th. So at that point, we'll know where these, these costs are really coming in, but we'll know sooner than that on the earlier phase bid packages. So that's my exercise for this evening. Actually, I will tell you that I disappointed a young lady over there at the high school because she wanted to know how long we were going to be with the pre-bid, and I said, well, it's just going to be a few minutes. Well, the engagement was such that I disappointed her by not being done right away. She said she had awards to do, and so, I'm just kidding, she, she was great, she really worked with us, so thanks for, for the, the understanding, so.
Can you define what is mobilization?
Yes, ma'am. That is where we would bring in a job trailer and other sanitary facilities, things that are going to start up the project.
Okay.
Essentially, since we're going to have staff on site, we would want them to have a place to work, have meetings with the contractors, and be able to invite you in to come see progress, and certainly do their correspondence with the main office.
Okay.
So, yes.
Expecting dirt turned, June, two weeks from now, three weeks from now?
Yes, in fact, we are, we've identified that constructions start to be, let's see, approximately third, third week of June, so third to fourth week of June.
Awesome.
Any other questions on the updated budget summary?
If we, along the process, how will it work if we have people that are interested in doing gifts and kind? We had visited Independence, and Independence had had some success with people donating time and doing things like that. How, do we send them to you? Do we send, who, do we contact? Say we have a whole lot of cleaning, when it comes time to clean the construction site.
Right.
We have civic orders, local organizations that are willing to come in and do that cleaning. How, how are we going to go about, if we have that opportunity? How are we going to take advantage of that opportunity? And what is the
Yeah.
Protocol?
Yeah, what we've seen in the past is services like that to be essentially what we call owner provided. We just would want to coordinate those efforts so that they line up at the right time within the schedule, and at the same time, make sure that if there's some key activities going on, such as a steel erection, that could become a safety concern.
Safety, correct.
We would just want to be aware of what those are, but certainly we would anticipate that we could help you through that, but we would see that as kind of an owner provided opportunity, yes.
And if there are opportunities that you see that, say, hey, that sticks out as being something that could be provided, or we could maybe coordinate, then, you know, certainly suggest, suggest that, and then we could say doable or not doable type of thing too.
Great, excellent. And, and, yes, Scott and Mike will be here and others, Kirk, who was at the pre-bid, so we'll have a, what we call a unified delivery kickoff meeting at the, before the pre-construction meeting, and at that time, we'll establish chains of communication. How do we go about putting these ideas in front of you and acting on them?
Good point, Robyn, thank you.
Very good.
I'm sure there'll be some of them kind of things to do even with earthwork for your first start. I know it's a lot easier to work around constructive side of a school and level and whatever else, and I know I figure I'm donating time with loader and backhoe, and I got a whole tight box scraper every level off the ground outside of the building, so it's smooth out there for you guys to get around on and whatever else.
Sure, and there are opportunities like that. There may be an opportunity for snow removal, for example, but those are the types of collective IQ sessions that we would want to have with you.
Do you want, should we, now my next question becomes, do we start collecting that list of possibilities now?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yes, that'd be perfect as well.
So that might be even something that we want to look at, at a board meeting at a, at a table discussion is, or a subcommittee there again, that would go through this list of, of things in the Estes, in their booklet, and earmark as things that we see possibilities of community involvement?
Do you want to refer that to buildings and grounds, or as special ad hoc?
I think buildings and grounds can take care of that.
It's only fair we dumped on you.
Yeah.
You guys do such a great job.
Jason and I will help coordinate that and come up with
Like I said, if you guys have specific, if you've seen examples of very successful opportunities in other places, I'd, I'd love to see a list of that as a starting point.
Okay.
Like, things like Jim said, and whatever else, those, those things are great things to
Absolutely, but with that being said, like what Jim said, you definitely, Jim can go help go through that book, each individual ones can help go through that book. I already have gone with the yellow marker of the last one, and things that I could see.
The detailed one, yeah.
Yeah, the detailed one, you can definitely see areas that I know if, if there's potential to have involvement. That might help us along the way, save some of our funds.
Certainly, for cleanup, you know, once we get that far, we can all
Well, and there, snow removal is a good one, there's a large, there's a large amount that's been budgeted for snow removal.
I got equipment to do all that here for no, for no charge, this is where we're just doing it.
And along with that, the means to acknowledge the help of others, as we had seen at Independence.
Well, the design committee probably should talk about that a little bit too, so we can give direction there, because, yeah, that was something we had discussed.
We're going to need a space on a wall for that. So, okay. Anything else for Estes? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll continue to move forward.
Thank you.
Agenda item eight is the amendment to professional services agreement with BLDD Architects. We have in our packet the amendment adjusting the fees from $980,000 to $1,236,79, and that is all due to the revised construction budget, alternate bid budget, et cetera, and the extension of First Avenue. Basically, this is all a culmination of previous board actions that we've taken as we've adjusted the scope of the project, so.
You should have the budget in the budget.
Huh?
You should have the budget in the budget.
Well, the, the, all of the things we've done in previous meetings
Yep.
Have thus resulted in changes in the professional services agreement with BLDD.
I'll make a motion, I would go ahead and approve.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment to the professional services agreement with BLDD Architects. Any further discussion by the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item nine is the 2015 legislative priorities. Sometime today, when did we get that? 11:08 this morning, we received the email from Board Member McCumber, who was appointed as the ISAB delegate last fall, so we'll turn it over to Board Member McCumber.
I want to begin with, should it not read legislative priorities for 2016?
No.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it should. We're not done yet this year.
They're, they're
There's still drag on them.
Yeah.
Start with the easiest one for me.
The first one could still apply because they have yet to
Adjourn.
Set supplemental state aid for
Want to rethink what we talked about last November and see if we can have a better chance? So, yes, we're being asked to look at our legislative priorities for 2016. Changes this year, in the past, we've made note of five priorities, this year we're going to, we are going to pick four. They're also different this year that is, the ISAB actually has a survey online that we go through, they're asking us to take and look at each one of their priorities and say, yes, we support this, nor we don't want to see it anymore online, or what we'd like to see made its changes. What I sent you this morning was what our priorities were last year. Those five priorities, because we picked five last year, they still do exist, they just have different reference, some of them have different reference numbers in the ISAB's list of priorities. We don't have to make a decision on these until later on. I would like the opportunity to possibly have us look at that survey. I know it's a lot, but there's a lot of good explanation there, it really does give us a good understanding of what the ISAB is trying to do in the legislature. And I think it's important for each one of us to know that, just for me, not, just for me to understand that, because it really is a very important part of what we do. The first one could still apply because they have yet to set supplemental state aid for...
Want to rethink what we talked about last November and see if we can have a better chance. So, yes, we're being asked to look at our legislative priorities for 2016. Changes this year, in the past, we've made note of five priorities. This year, we're going to, we are going to pick four. They're also different this year that is, the ISAB actually has a survey online that we go through. They're asking us to take and look at each one of their priorities and say, "Yes, we support this," nor "We don't want to see it anymore online," or "What we'd like to see made its changes." What I sent you this morning was what our priorities were last year. Those five priorities, because we picked five last year, they still do exist. They just have different reference, some of them have different reference numbers in the ISAB's list of priorities. We don't have to make a decision on these until later on. I would like the opportunity to possibly have us look at that survey. I know it's a lot, but there's a lot of good explanation there. It really does give us a good understanding of what the ISAB is trying to do in a legislature. And I think it's important for each one of us to know that, just for me, not, just for me to understand that, because it really is a very important part of what we do. So, from there, how to proceed, how to work? Do we have a special work session? Do we just do our homework, due diligence, and we eat, do it separately, come back and collaborate? Last year, I just kind of sat down with Terry, and we basically looked at what there was and took from the years prior and came up with something. This year, I'd like a little bit more involvement from, since we have gone down to the Capitol. We have been involved in this whole process. Let's keep the whole involvement going, all the way to sending our representative in November to the school board to decide what it is that we want as our parties. And we, as a board, could come up with some pretty probably good ideas. Some of them need tweaking, some of them need changes. There's a lot of that that happens at these meetings that I sit in. There's a lot of school districts that get up and say, "We propose this language change, we propose this addition," and a lot of them do get adopted and changed. So, it's an opportunity for us to really have our voices heard.
I wondered about, you know, taking all of that and inviting our local legislators to come in and also be involved in the discussion with us, that they can maybe say, if we say, "Well, we really like this one," what do you hear about this down there? Is there something that could be tweaked to make it more appealing to the legislative body? And I know that our local legislators, obviously, they're really supportive of us. They would be, I'm sure, very happy to come in and do that. I know other, when we went to that meeting in Sumner, maybe, they, you know, they talked about that, that other districts were having legislative meetings with their legislators, and maybe this is a good topic.
That would be a really good point, to ask a legislator, "Okay, is there wording in there that would make this possibly more appealing to?" Along with Phil?
Sure.
From ISAB, I think he would be a nice asset to have, help further, or now, like, understand where the ISAB is coming from with some of these priorities they've put forth also.
So, would be your suggestion to fill out the survey, or do our homework and due diligence online, and come back with a group setting with our House member and Senate member, if possible?
Yes.
Would that be possible to add on to the agenda for the second meeting in June?
Reading her, is that too soon?
Yes. There's a lot.
There's a lot?
There's going to be quite a bit, and I would, you know, really want you to be able to have time to read them and absorb them. It's not something you're going to be able to do all in one night. And we don't need to have them in until August 14th.
Okay.
So, I don't...
Special meeting in July, or?
Yeah, I'd give flexibility to, to the point that when we do that, we'll obviously have made our priorities known that night, so even if it was done just before that date, we can do it online. We can send our priorities in online, so as long as they're there on the 14th. So, yeah, depending on what our, because we have so many priorities with our building and everything right now, that I think June might be too soon.
Could be just a special work session in the superintendent's office, around the table, sort of spread papers out, that kind of thing, a little more cordial.
In early July, or earlier than our third week?
Well, and we probably need...
Projected meeting, because you'll be out of town then.
Right.
In July, so...
And we need to contact then, people we'd like to involve and check their schedules, so if we can just tentatively decide that that's what we'd like to do, and then we'll set a date, as we know, all parties involved will be able to participate.
Sounds good. So, we will all do our homework and go through the IASB survey online and ask administration to contact our area representatives to see if we can schedule something in early July to meet with them.
And I will email each of you a link to that survey on the IASB.
Thanks.
That would be much easier.
I was just going to look for it.
Than trying to find it ourselves. Thank you.
Most important question is, how many board credits? Just kidding.
Well, we can ask, because we'll probably be the first board to have done it, so maybe we could.
And in July, that would be for 15, 16.
Oh, that's wonderful.
We'll start the new year.
All right, let's get a head start.
There you go. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 10 is the superintendent's evaluation process. For that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cox.
Thank you. So, on June 22nd, we will have the summative evaluation. I've given you a packet tonight. On the top is the Iowa Individual Administrative Professional Development Plan. Again, you've seen this several times over the course of the last 10 months or so. This is the focus for the evaluation this year. First year of employment, it's the Iowa Standards for School Leaders, the big summative evaluation, and then you do that every third year. And the interim school years, the evaluation process is focused on the Professional Development Plan. The second page is the five job targets that were in there, and your ability to put down comments. You'll be turning this into the board president, and he'll compile one evaluation. And following that is the reflective self-evaluation about the five topics, to give you some additional information upon which to perhaps help do the evaluation. So, you can give these either directly to Terry or to Scott. If you turn them in by June 8th, then that gives him two weeks to be able to prepare things for the June 22th meeting.
Because there's a lot of ballgames between those two dates. I need to be...
So, sooner is probably better as well.
Yeah, but they're only, thank you. You can do that at daytime.
There's a lot of ninth and 10th grade games from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m.
Questions about this, or the process?
That's good. Thank you.
You'd hand that down to Terry, and she has a copy.
Much, a little more involved than what we did last year. Actually have essay answers to work on, more so than just numbers.
A little bit.
Okay. You weren't here last year on the board, but it was more numbers-driven. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, consideration of consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and, as amended.
As amended, I'm sorry, as amended.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as amended. Roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyte?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 12, important upcoming dates.
June 8th is the next board meeting, and it is at the high school library. Remember that during the summer, board meetings are held up at the Charles City High School. We have air conditioning up there, and the weather is hot. It gives us a more comfortable place to meet. Yeah, I hope so, too. The time has not changed, so it still is at 6:30, but again, it will be at Charles City High School on June 8th. June 10th is our final school improvement advisory committee meeting of the year. That's at 5:00 o'clock here in the middle school cafeteria. Those are always open to the public. June 18th is the 500 North Grand Meeting, 5:30, also here in the middle school cafeteria.
Any other important dates that anyone wants to bring up? Hearing none, we will declare the meeting adjourned at 8:10 p.m.